The red light's not on.
Okay, and before I -- well, one more person for public comment. Councilwoman Danielle Larson wanted to ask one more question.
Ms. Shoemaker? I have a quick question for you, please. How do you screen the consumers that you have coming in? How are they screened?
The intake process.
So screened for, in regards to clinical, housing?
Okay.
What makes them eligible to live at 705?
What I would like to know is your background checks for your consumers that you have coming in there. Do you do background checks for them? And if you do, what type of background checks do you do? Do you do nationwide, criminal, child abuse? I mean, let's throw that elephant out in the room there.
Okay, I'll read it to them.
I mean, we have pedophiles everywhere, across the country.
Yes.
It's a highly, you know...
I'm sorry, is there a zoning ordinance that the tenants that are there now had to fill one out, a background check? Is that a city thing that I wasn't aware of?
I was just asking.
No, I don't know.
No.
I'm asking.
If it's something that the owner does, I do not know.
But it's not required by Marsville?
No.
Okay. Our staff, because we're JCO accredited, the Joint Commission accredited, we have background checks, we have competencies, we have national background checks, we have driver's license checks, we have Level Two background checks that we have to perform for any staff member that works for us.
What about that?
In any capacity.
What about the consumer?
Client.
Your client, sorry, your client.
Uh, no. Because that's a HIPAA violation, we cannot go further than what they allow us to do. As when you go to the doctor, when you go to the pain doctors, when we used to have so many pain doctors, they didn't ask what their background was. They didn't ask any tenants what their background was. We don't do that. And unless it's required by the city, it's not something that I don't think that they did for the tenants that are there now.
Thank you.
I have a question. They're considered, they're considered medical clients. They're a protected class, and I understand the protection, the class of protection that they're getting. They're considered to have an illness that you're treating.
Yes.
So they're protected by federal law for individuals who are suffering from an illness. The same kind of protections as you would as somebody with a handicap that's physically sick.
Or AIDS.
Exactly.
Right? Or AIDS. And quite frankly, nobody ever knows, right? And you can't ask. It's like when you go get a job, you can't ask. They worked here? Are they eligible for the hire? You can ask all you want, anything else, but if they tell you, it's a loss that you just, you can't ask.
Thank you.
Real quick, just one chime in. John Mitroff, Executive Director for Banyan. As part of the screening process, there is a clinical component where we thoroughly review somebody's history, which includes legal concerns, and anyone that is a sex offender is disqualified from participating in our treatment. They're probably referred to a special program.
Thank you.
So Megan's Law listed people, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we'll get back to our public comment. Next one is Phil Frigario.
Good evening. My name is Phil Frigario. I live at 719 Crown Street, and I would just like to make a very short statement regarding the JTB purchase of 705 Crown Street. Regardless of who is purchasing 705, if it's used as non-conforming, it is inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the R1 to retain the character of low density and family housing in this zone. Either zoning codes mean something or they mean nothing. My family will oppose this project, and I will look for the borough representatives and court enforcement to keep us informed as this process rolls out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is, I think, Charles Davis.
I'm Charles Davis. I live at 833 Highland Avenue. When I saw that there were over 5,000 deaths, overdose deaths in Pennsylvania last year, it reminded me of the mudslide disaster in California, which just didn't happen on its own. There was wildfires there that turned those slopes bare that set them up to slide when the rains came. And I think this opioid crisis is similar. Back in the 70s, 80s, and early 90s, physicians were, as a group, sort of came together to prescribe as few narcotics as possible. Starting in the late 90s, due to marketing from Wintman, Teter Farm, St. Front, and some newly developed drugs that were very sophisticated, there was a much increased prescribing of opioids. So that's the firestorm. Opioids everywhere. And so now comes, on the tail of that, on the end of that, this is a section from New York Times, 28 December. The entire section is entitled Addiction Incorporated, and this subsection is the City of Addict Entrepreneurs. Patients get clean, open their own clinics, take over entire neighborhoods. Which is a... I've been in medicine a long time, and I remember back in the 70s and 80s when psychiatric hospitalism was happening, that the, you know, the classic belief is that the supply-demand situation is that, that demand drives supply. But in fact, as psychiatric hospital beds opened up, there were more and more people with psychiatric diagnoses. So it actually reversed. Excuse me, I've got a dry mouth. In this situation, we are seeing a boom. This is the story of Prescott, Arizona, where 48,000 residents, and they have... May I have a bit of water? There are 48,000 residents in Prescott, and at one point there were 170 sober houses. There were, there were multiple sober houses on each block in certain parts of the city. There's such a low bar to the development programs that any... As the gentleman who presented last, there are very, very talented people who are addicted. I worked in the addiction field starting in 1984. I was the co-director of a 50-bed inpatient addiction program at McGuire Hospital, E Hospital in Richmond, Virginia, and I was the medical director of one of the best inpatient addiction programs that I've ever seen in Charlottesville, Virginia, in the late 80s, and worked after that in the field. Some of the brightest people I ever met happened to be addicted. So you take an addicted person who's creative and bright, and you show them how to make big money quickly, and they can go out and open their own clinics. And that's what this special section is about. And the charges that are going on are astronomical, and they piggyback, you know, frequently the individual who owns the treatment center also owns the houses. And then there's drug testing. There was one case wherein, and this boggles my mind, but it's in here, that one individual, over a period of four months, had charges of over $200,000 for drug urine screens. You know, they're running extremely sophisticated screens and charging the insurance companies. So the hazard is that we are using up a tremendous amount of money, and if this treatment doesn't work, which it may not, in other words, I've worked with a lot of people who've gotten clean and sober, and those people who've gotten clean and sober and done well have not gone hurrying after money. They've gone after quality things in life, not money. And so when you see, and there's many statements in this section of the paper, that the drive is to accumulate wealth. Everybody wants to get wealthy like the other guys wealthy. And we've got a great problem here. I mean, it's a problem in Marsville, it's a problem everywhere, and I think that one sober house leads to two to 10 to 20. There's no limit on it. And I guess my main concern is this using so much funding that won't be available if the treatment program's not good. There's, there are no outcome measures on addiction treatment programs. I've never seen any that were good. So we've got a problem, and I think we need to be really careful with how we go about addressing this. I think should we get pugnacious and simply say that we don't want addicts in that property, that you basically have lost the court case. It's a delicate, delicate, difficult, important problem.
It is. I don't mean to cut you off out of how much of what you said. We have a lot of people, if you could wrap that up. That's okay, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Nancy Sherlock?
Good evening, Nancy Sherlock, 424 West Franklin Street. An entirely different subject. When I was here on January 2nd, I was continually harassed and harangued from the audience. Didn't really get a lot of my thoughts out, but this had to come with what I made my statement about the political makeup of this particular board.
Does this have anything to do with this? Is this still other political thing that you didn't get at before? Because there's some serious things here tonight. That's where you came to chastise somebody with that?
I am not here to chastise anyone, I'm here to finish my statement if I may.
Okay, only because of the rules that are on the table that you were also, Council on adopted with that?
Yes.
I mean, there's no political banter back and giving people shots with that?
And I don't expect any answers.
Okay, I'll just make that clear in case I have to.
But what I would like to say is on that particular evening, six members of this council had a piece of paper with a very structured planned nomination agenda, and two members, Ted Parker and Karen Conical, did not have that paper, so they weren't privy to the nomination plan. That's all I'm saying.
You do know that they got everything that we had as far as the solicitors and stuff, nothing was held back. They had every opportunity to bring any other name they wanted out there, they did not. And I'm not going to get into all that stuff. So that's all you have to say about that. It's political. These are people here for about serious things tonight.
I understand that, Ms. Smith, but I also had my opportunity to speak.
I'm sure.
I would have been done in two minutes had it not been continually adopted. Thank you. And the other thing is that at that particular evening, Ms. Reizbach had said she had a plan for me, and I'm hoping that sometime in the future she can either share that publicly or privately. Either way. I do have a que... I don't know the plan, that's why I'm asking. The other thing I'd like to note is if you could say with certainty that you're not considering replacing Chief McClain, there's been some discussion about that.
We're not even talking about that tonight, and we have no idea what anybody's doing here.
I'm asking the Council. This would be, this would be a decision that this council would make, okay?
If that happens, right?
This is public comment. People can say whatever they want. The council is not under any obligation to respond if they can, if they choose to. They don't have it. This is the time for the public to say what they want.
Thank you. The other thing, I was wondering, was there a, a study done financially on hiring Keystone Services? Was there a financial money study or anything done? Again, I don't expect to be, you know, the questions to be answered. But I would like to say decor, we've talked about decor, decor works on both sides. What that should be is that adults, both on the dais and in the audience, should be able to sit still without outbursts, even if they don't like what they're hearing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay. Joan Pastore?
John Pastore, 25 Dieter Avenue. I missed the January 2nd meeting and saw on the TV that we had a new borough manager
Introduce.
And Keystone Municipal Services. Is that a permanent job? Did we advertise anything? Did we get any resumes for code enforcement?
How many times? I have, everything's in the office. I believe you called our manager and spoke with him about all that.
Yeah, I was waiting for a call today, or, sorry, yesterday, and I didn't receive a call, he's really busy.
Yeah, he is. He's very much. Our former manager did have three proposals, I'll just let you know, and everybody got those things. We had three proposals from three code companies. This was all since October, November. It wasn't something new that was being investigated.
No, I've been coming here for about five months, and we've accomplished nothing in those... We kept putting along, we were going to advertise code enforcement, but we didn't know what it was going to pay, we didn't know what it was going to entail. What are they charging an hour?
I can't answer that right now. We have a really big meeting here. The firm manager will give you all that downstairs. At our agenda meeting, we had a whole breakdown of all that, and he can give you a copy of all that, you can get it. I don't know it off the top of my head. I really don't. But he has all that proposal downstairs.
All right. I have a question on the bills here. Page 1, 518 Code Inspections Incorporated, for $1,600?
The company we had before had to finish up what they were already in the middle of, so that's what that is.
Okay.
And the bills you see now are from the previous month that you're going to see, so from last month, December.
That was for 14 building inspections? That's $114 in inspection?
They have a whole different pay scale than the new company, because they did, they adopted ours. They, it was an outside altogether, outside company. It's only did UCCs.
Okay. And page 1 of the expenditure review, 328 Borough of Marsville, Open R, Seward Retirement something for $750,000. What's that for?
He got an stipend for insurance package, so he retired.
Okay. So basically, you're not going to answer any of my questions?
I don't have any of that data in front of me, and I know the manager had called you and spoke with you. You ran to all the girls downstairs and he'll address that. Yes, please.
Sorry, I think we spoke on the phone Friday evening.
Yes.
And I explained that the hiring of Keystone Municipal Services, what is in place of the previous outsourced inspection company, I believe their name is Code Enforcement Inc.
Right.
And that's what was done, and I, if you want to call me tomorrow, I'll verify this, but I believe it says $65 an hour is the rate for Keystone Municipal Services.
All right. Are they working out? I Googled them up. I'm not real good with computers, but they said they're in Squawmore.
That's where their corporate office is located, yes.
Are they going to work out of there, or are they going to be working out of the borough?
They actually will maintain office hours here several days a week. They've already been on-site.
Are we paying that $65 an hour back and forth travel time? Or does it start here?
No, it starts here.
Okay. Do you still have my number?
I might, I'm not sure, but if you call me tomorrow, I'd be happy to call you back.
All right, I have a...
And I'll verify that information for you.
A lot of questions, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. William Setzer?
Hi, I'm William, my name is William Setzer, 806 Crown Street. I'm a resident of the Mars Heights neighborhood for 22 years now. Many of you know me. I prepared a very short statement. I just wanted to mention, I had never heard Ron Gombach's interesting comments or Phil Frigario's, and I think that non-conforming use of spending is something very important, something the Borough Council and perhaps our solicitor and other people should look into, it sounded pretty strong. I prepared a very short statement, I'll read it to you so that things can move along. I'm not here tonight to judge Banyan, but rather I would like to express my sincere hope that when the time comes, and perhaps it's here, for permanence and zoning decisions, that all of our government officials will maintain and enforce the current zoning status and ordinances created for the betterment, protection of our neighborhood, and for all of our community residents. I thank you for listening to our comments tonight. I thank you in advance for your serious consideration, your continued attention to this matter, and I just wanted you to know where my sentiments lie on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Andreas Krone, am I saying that right?
Yeah, that was pretty close. My name is Andreas Krone, 742 Crown Street. My family, I've called Marsville home for the past 20 years. I also have a pretty brief statement. My concern's really on the safety side. What's Ring Bell's, what's facility put on our police department, our ambulances? There was discussion on cameras and such, so that's a serious concern that I and my family have. I trust that council, I appreciate council's probably questions earlier when Banyan was presenting. I trust that you give this very, very careful consideration. I think Charles was very eloquent in talking about the financial model that's in place here. I think that's a very critical piece of the puzzle to understand, you know, as the flow of funds from A to E. I appreciate everything you do for the borough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deborah Shmelzke, am I saying that right? I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Deborah Shmelzke, 853 Highland Avenue. Just have something little to say, that I'm a Realtor in the area all around here, and it's very difficult to sell houses in Marsville as opposed to the other areas right around here, Lardley, Fairless Hills, Pensbury School Districts, all these other ones, people always mention those first, and you mentioned Marsville. No, they don't want to be in Marsville. So with that, with that obstacle that we have, it's going to be harder to have another obstacle with having to explain what this treatment center is or whatever down the street to people, they're going to think it's a halfway house or whatever. It's just another obstacle in a way. It's just a new quarter to sell houses in Marsville, harder than it already is. That's it.
Thank you. Bruce Stevens?
Bruce Stevens, I live at 714 Crown Street, so my driveway goes into 705's driveway. My only question is, is their proposed use, the number of people in each apartment, in performance with our zoning records?
Thank you. Dennis Houlihan?
Good evening, my name's Dennis Houlihan. I live at 44 East Trenton Avenue, about three houses away from the proposed site. When I bought my house three years ago, I checked the zoning ordinances in the town. R1 was supposed to be residential. Extremely concerned about the proposed Banyan. I just want to say I'm opposed to it. Think it would affect property values negatively.
Thank you. Julie Brady? Don Stroud?
Jane Berger, 90 West Maple Avenue, Marsville. I'll start off first with something on the bill list that is a concern to me. On page 2, GL 1712, for the current CPA, Lopez, Nidosia, I didn't say that right, you're forgiven, and Larden. It says final DCE dotted, I'm thinking that's 2017, which DCE dot it is usually due then in the spring, but it says slash payroll tax issue. And that's for a total of $8,500. Are we in trouble again with the IRS that we've got payroll tax issues? I mean, we can't blame this one on the previous manager, but I know there was issues, that guy was gone two years ago, and I thought things were straightened out after the $14,000 fine for problems and submitting stuff to the IRS for taking care of. So I'm not sure if you can answer that at this time, but I am calling it to your attention that it's a major concern if we still have payroll tax issues. You really don't, IRS to be our next year's best friend, and we have to keep paying money to. And it is obviously important that there are these competencies, and you know, wasn't sure about a financial director, but when you see that kind of stuff, it really says we maybe have more financial problems in this borough that none of us are aware of, and before we can truly move forward, that might be where we need to put our house in order. Banyan, some of my questions were answered. I'm not hearing that it's a lockdown, but I'd say it's a closed facility, no one goes out unchaperoned, and when they do, it's with a staff person. But I heard that both the president, the previous mayor, and the police chief were there. I'm wondering if the company did his due diligence or was shared that right across the street is a retail establishment that has a documented history of many drug arrests over there. And if you're in a treatment or even a residence, or those who are trying to reach sobriety from drug addiction and building a life, I'd be concerned about putting that kind of temptation within 50 feet. And there's a shopping town nearby, and you know, there's word, I don't have documented arrests or anything there, but it's an also possible area of concern for drugs, opioid traffic. This is not unique to Marsville, we know that drugs are everywhere in Trenton and Philadelphia, and probably another Bigfield and the West Town, New Haven, everywhere. It is an equalizer socio-economically, but when there are facilities that are trying to help individuals do that and kind of transition in the community, I just really have a concern at being that close in proximity to temptation. The other thing I heard, when we pair some things you're being done, I'm really concerned that some of the things are identified, really require building permits, so maybe that might be something, might have a real quick sit-down with the fiscal lady that was here to see exactly what they are doing on that property. And as you heard, some of her thoughts of previous conversations before they bought the property, you might want to look in the ability of prospective buyers of a property to get information from within our code office. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam President, if I may clarify two issues raised by the Speaker. The first was, yes, the audit you referenced was delayed because the auditor experienced a catastrophic accident and obtained an extension by DCED to file the borough's audit late.
2017.
Well, it would have been 2016 and 2017, yes. The '27 audit hasn't been done yet. The second point you raise, the payment question, that was for settlement of fines levied by the IRS for payroll violations, yes?
Thank you.
Georgia St. Mar?
Well, I'm sorry, it's this me that I'm coming here. Georgia St. Marsh, 227 West Franklin Street. I'm speaking for my husband and himself. We didn't have the opportunity previously to thank Fred Kerner, who represented us quite well on council and as a neighbor in the third ward, and we really would like to take that opportunity. Yeah, although it doesn't really seem like that, we don't, you know, this probably isn't the right time, but I wanted to get it over with. Despite any political differences, Fred is a great neighbor. He, no matter what, my husband and I have always felt well-represented in the third ward, and on behalf of the Tashin family, we thank Fred Kerner for his service.
Thank you.
Sorry to take some...
That's okay, thank you. Holly Harmon?
Good evening, Holly Harmon, South Pennsylvania Avenue. Again, the previous question about the tax, payroll tax, was answered.
It was just eye-opening to see how meetings should be run, and how efficient things went just at your first meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. John Kane?
Good evening, John Kane, 720 Crown Street. I am one of four homeowners who have recently purchased a home on Crown Street the past two years, and I live directly across the street from 705. I came to Morrisville and decided to move on Crown Street because I thought the street had tremendous potential and had great character, and I envisioned one day raising a family here. I'm very concerned that any consideration of Bannion would be a departure from the zoning code and set precedents that would damage our community with future non-conforming businesses. So I hope and trust that council will enforce its ordinances, and that will be put in place in order to protect its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Clapner?
Hi, I'm Christine Clapner, 705 Crown Street. I would just like to thank everyone of you so much for listening, and I'd thank everyone for coming. I live at the building with Bannion, and I oppose their plan and their possession to remove myself, because I really want to stay there. I want to, like my neighbors said, I have a family there, and I've seen people get married and have kids, and it's just, we have a really good vision, like we saw, for this town, and I think that we could all make it really happen. I work hard, and I pay my rent. Mine's $60,000 I've probably paid in four years, because I come close to what they can make in one day. But I don't think that it's good for the society, the community, myself, neighbors. You know, everyone works really hard, and they depend on, you know, the town to, at least to protect them. And I'm hoping that we can stop them from removing me from my home, because I would like to stay there, even though I don't technically own it. You know, I live there and I pay rent. But I think, you know, the whole thing with the money, $2,000 a day, and times it and multiply it by five, by 30, and then you talk to millions of dollars, and you're just waiting for the money to come through, and who gets it? It's really sad, and that wasn't the point of helping the opioid crisis. And I understand people have problems and addictions, and we want to help them, and we should give them a chance, and if...